You guys ready? You need a minute?
Ready.
Okay. All right, well, welcome everyone to our planning commission meeting tonight. We're gonna start with a word of prayer from member Little. And if you would please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our dear kind heavenly father, we are grateful that we could meet together, grateful for thy blessings upon us, this community, and how we could work together. We pray for thy continual guidance and direction. We pray that we can work together and overcome challenges and trials. And pray for thy hand and recognize it in all that we do and these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no questions, we'll take a motion.
So.
All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
None opposed? Any conflicts of interest for any members of the planning commission for anything on the agenda tonight? Having heard none, we can move on to a period of public comment. We do have a public hearing for item number six scheduled on the commercial use table amendment. So if you have comments specifically for that, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. But we do open it up for public comment for any other issues or anything else on the agenda. If people want to comment on anything else, you'll know number seven is administrative discussion tonight. So there'll be no public hearing specifically for that. So if you've got comments about that, now's your time to come up and talk about it. Unless you're the applicant. Unless you're the applicant.
This isn't about the subject.
Oh, okay.
So we just have a couple of other pieces that we are working with, working to try to get ready for whatever we decide to do with them. But anyway, I know we've been told to wait for the future use map. And our understanding was it was gonna be done in like December, January. And I know they're still working on it, but we're just hoping that it'll kind of be hurried along because it's, we're kind of in a holding pattern until we get that, that done. So we need to proceed if they're gonna do it quickly. If they're not, then we can proceed and do whatever we need to to get our property re-adjusted or realigned or whatever. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, thanks for that. We're probably gonna have some discussion about that a little later, so we can, we can figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, thanks. Anybody else for public comment tonight? Nope, if not, we'll go out of public comment for tonight's discussion and move on to item number six on the agenda.
Good evening, this is a code amendment request from the commercial buffer zone. It would, it's requesting that we add outdoor storage as a commercial conditional use permit level two if you come to the planning commission. The current area for the commercial buffer zone that you guys probably wear is that small commercial subdivision at the end of the, at the west end, west of the, west end of the airport runway. It's grandfathered in from years ago. We recently updated the uses in there. When we did that, we did not want to continue and have outdoor storage along the south side. And so that was our code amendment at the time. With Mr. Winterson, it has, it currently has an existing grandfathered in, impound lot.
State approved impound.
Yeah, a state approved impound lot. And needs to continue that outdoor storage. That property's been sold, has to have some buildings put on it, but he would like to continue it. It's a logical place, but we needed to do this code amendment in order to do it on the south side. With the conditional use permit, the county would still have the ability to control its impact to a degree. Effectively would be allowed use, but the county, as we look at a site plan, we would be able to look at criteria of the location of the outdoor storage. You know, is it right next to over to the house? Well, then you'd have to push it back, that was a possibility. Or, you know, landscaping, burning, ordinary fences. All those types of things would be able to be used to mitigate its impact. But it's still would be probable of allowed use. Conditional uses in Utah are basically allowed uses, but you get to put some criteria on and how you can mitigate their impact. I'll let Mr. Winter talk more about what his vision of it is. But when we're looking at this code amendment, we're talking about allowing any type of outdoor storage through the conditional use permit in the commercial buffer zone, which is basically the airport and then this small commercial area.
And Peterson, next to Hines.
Yes, sorry.
Yes. So the existing ones, what zone are they in? The ones that were.
The existing ones are in the CB zone.
They're in this, okay. Right.
Their grandfathered in uses. And they're, and they're all on the north side of commercial street.
I'm trying to remember back with our discussions. I can't remember. I mean, there was obviously, it was two years of discussions about this table, the commercial buffer.
Well, this was a more recent amendment. Haley did a lot of great work of researching, figuring out the uses and updating it.
We had salvage yard as a use in commercial buffer, just not outside storage.
We're talking like right south of the Scotsman Center, right?
Yes.
There's all kinds of stuff outside.
Sure, but it's not a lot.
Well, grandfathered in, but nothing.
Well, well.
They're legal non-conformal, is what they are.
If they was there before, they're okay.
If they were.
It's now that they can't.
I mean, you, you know, business owner wants to come in, make an investment by any piece of property, paving, rebuilding, that type of thing, you wanna make sure it's not allowed use and not just stuck in there. And the conditional use allows for it to be, you know, have parameters to mitigate.
Okay.
Questions?
Not any.
No. I'm gonna hear from the applicant or go into public hearing first. What do you prefer? Do you care?
They ain't got a model.
No, it doesn't matter. Let's, uh, let's just go into public hearing and if anybody says.
I move to go into public hearing for item number six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're now in public hearing for item number six. Any member of the public that has any specific comment for item number six, now is your opportunity to come speak to this issue. No? No, you, you can speak as the applicant in just a second. This is a strange formality. Okay, having seen none, we'll take a motion to go out of public hearing.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're out of public hearing for item number six. Now, if the applicant would like to speak, you're welcome to.
I've, I've been in business up here for 21 years now. I had the lot over on the corner that Mike Fabco, that I rented from him for 21 years. The rent started getting increasingly more and more, and so I asked him if he wanted to sell it about five, six years ago. And he said, yes, he would, which would have been great for me because my grandfathered in right there. And he wanted, he wanted $275,000 for the lot. And it wasn't gonna happen. And so my rent continued to increase. And last, a year ago in December, he increased my rent from, started out at a hundred dollars a month there. And it was gonna increase all the way up to $750 a month. And my rent comes on a little bit of a third of an acre, all fits off. I asked him again if he wanted to sell it, and he said, yeah, I'd sell it, but he wanted $400,000 for this time. And it had kind of come to my knowledge that he already had, he already had somebody that was gonna buy it. And so I got in a position where I was gonna be forced out. And so I took matters in my own hand and I went and contacted the three property owners that are right there, Scott Smalley, Brian Gunn, and Dirk Purser. And Dirk Purser didn't wanna sell, and Scott Smalley didn't wanna sell. And I was finally able to talk Brian Gunn to sell him. I went up to the county, I already had building, I mean, I already had business licenses already. So I went up to Leslie Hyde and I said, Leslie, I need to transfer business licenses over to the across the street. And she goes, oh, that's, that's no problem, you just gotta talk to Lance first. And that's when I found out that it was a problem. My main goal over there, and I don't, you guys all know who I am, most of you do. I run the towing service up here, I'm the only towing service in Morgan. If, if I'm not granted business licenses, then I can't, I can't do what I do up here. I got my, I got my Weaver dispatch bill today for, for Morgan County. I had 11 calls for the sheriff last month. If, if I go out of business, then they have to rotate out of Weaver County. And the response, that time goes from like 10, 15 minutes to an hour to an hour and a half. And I don't know if that's something you guys are willing to let the sheriff's department do. I've got, got a really good relationship with the sheriff's department up here. It's nice because, you know, when I get a call and they say it's up on Dope Road, I know where Dope Road is. Okay, if they call down, get somebody from Weaver County, they said it's up on Dope Road, it's like, no idea. I have no idea where Big Mountain is, I have no idea. So I, I think as far as my position here in town, it's, it's pretty important to keep the tow business and the impound yard in, in the county. In order to have, in order to have a state approved, you have to, in order to be on the, on the rotation of which, you have to have a state approved impound yard, an office and a business license in every county that you serve. So I have, I have some in Davis County, some in Weaver County, I've had them up here for 21 years. And if that all goes away, then it, it's a detriment to the county. And then also with, with all of the homeowners associations up here, where they don't allow them to have two trailers on a piece of property, and the trailer has to be behind the, you know, fence. With this property, what my, what my main goal is, is to have an RV, you know, like trailer storage yard. Most of it's just gonna be, you know, clean, roof equals trailers. As far as, you know, impounded wreck junk cars, it's, that's not, that's not really on the agenda. I've talked with the two houses behind me. Before all this happened, I went over and I, I talked to, I can't remember who that guy's name, I can't remember what he, whoever his name was. I told, told the one neighbor that it butts up to the most, that, you know, they're, they're always afraid of what's gonna be put into a business area. And I, I told him, I said, this is gonna be, there are gonna be no lights, there's gonna be no sound, there's gonna be no dust. It's gonna be parked trailers and a couple of impound cars. And the guy told me, he says, thank you so much for letting me know, because that's, that's kind of, you know, you don't know what you're gonna get, and he says, that's exactly what would be great here. So that's my, that's my secret.
You're gonna have covered parking for trailers?
Well.
Big?
I, I would love to, but I mean, eventually down the road, I'd like to build a building and I'd actually like to start an RV, small repair business, you know, like fixing a water heater or putting a bearing on or winter icing, not anything, I mean, you know, as far as trailers goes, it's not like a body shop, it's not cutting them well and grinding them, it's, it's pretty quiet stuff. So that's the eventual goal, is to build a building on the back part of the property and then have all the storage area in the front. And covered parking would be great, but it's probably, on an acre of ground, it's kind of hard to strategically place a nice covered thing, be able to, you know, move the trailers in and out. So eventually, you know, if, if one of those other guys decided they wanna sell their property, then maybe that would be the way it would go. But as of right now, neither of those guys have ever budged on wanting to sell their property.
Okay.
Questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Questions for amongst ourselves? Ready for motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the county commission to approve the revision of Morgan County Code Section 8-5C-3 to allow for outdoor storage as a C2 use in the CB zone based on the text listed in the staff report dated January 13th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Let me, let me just say one more thing. This is, this is, I mean, you go right across the street and it's, it's a mess. I mean, this is gonna be organized, clean storage. It's not, you know, not gonna be what's been there, so.
You're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have my daily parking lot, Mike charged me a hundred bucks a month to park it there while I was building my house. That's funny.
That's pretty steep.
It is.
Now anybody had nowhere else to put it. And now you wanna truck it up to your place.
Yeah.
If they want to switch places and augment that covered, and they want a hundred bucks a month for it. Holy crap, it's trailer.
Clean your dad's out, park it in there.
It's good, great.
You kidding me?
All right.
I'll take ten years to clean it out, and by then, my trailer would be bought into pieces.
Okay, item.
We're ready.
Number seven. Now we're good.
Little side note.
On YouTube.
Sorry, did you say go ahead, Mary?
Yes, we're on, we're on number seven. Thanks for the lead.
This is a proposed 12-watt subdivision, adding a single-family lots to the Paul Warner subdivision, the existing Paul Warner subdivision. It's, I, I stayed over here because I, because I can scroll through the map better. It's located just north of Old Highway Road. This is the State of Parsons gravel pit that is now approved for CW Land's single-family and townhome subdivision element. They've got the commercial coming in on the south side. And then Rollins Ranch here, of course, to the north and east. The zoning is R120 for these lots, so they could go down to a half acre, 27 square foot lots, minimum lot size. It's a little higher density than what's, well, this will be commercial on the south, directly west, but little, little smaller lots in the CW land for the most part, and they're approved subdivision. And then of course, all the ranches also R120. These lots tend to be a little bit bigger through the PRT. And the plat itself, just look at this one, it's kind of a walk through. It's gonna come off Old Highway, go north and do a little hook. It's pretty straightforward. This is an existing lot, existing home on this lot, an existing home on this lot. The detention area will be part 112. The plat notes indicate that 112 is responsible for containing it. There were some issues with the fire, wanted to make sure that they had hydrants in and all that, and also water pressure. We received a letter from the Highland Water Company, they tested the system, and it has, has the fire float in the hydrants. See, I think that's about the only outstanding issue. Is there any questions from?
Why does it say one R on the number one?
I'm sorry, but?
Why does it say one R on number, on lot number one? But not on any of the others?
That one there?
Yeah.
Restricted to no access to the highway.
It's restricted, it has to, can't come off that highway.
Ask off the road.
The access.
So.
But 12 doesn't, because it's already existing.
Right.
Any other questions for staff?
How big are Rollins?
Well, they're a third of an acre, a half acre, I mean, they're, some are a little larger, but they're in that same ballpark of 30,000 inches square.
Any, it's R120, so there's no architectural standards, because it's not town center, right?
Correct.
Anything else for staff? If not, we'll hear from the applicant, yeah? The applicant wanna say anything?
No, I don't owe them anything we need to say, there's not any questions for us. I think for a few more people last year, trying to get them checked off, they're ready to go.
Okay, yeah, you certainly don't have to. Does anybody have any questions, specific questions for the applicant? Oh, okay then, thanks. So discussion wise, for us, anything, anything you wanna discuss? Okay.
I guess the only thing I have to say is, it's gonna be between Rollins and another.
Yeah, the same thing.
Project, so.
And it's owned for us, so it's appropriate.
Okay, we'll take a motion then.
Go for it, baby. That's your job.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval to the county commission for the Paul Warner subdivision plat amendment, application 21.036, located at 4900 West Old Highway Road, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated January 13th, 2022.
Second.
It's time.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, okay. Motion passes? Thank you.
When you get to discuss that, you can ask, I'll say it's R, if you're not, I won't, sorry.
I'll do the update right after, come on.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just roll right into it, we got.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, no, no problem at all. This is normally, we normally give people an opportunity to leave now, because this is where it gets boring, even more boring sometimes. Very rare are we, someone wants to stay and listen, so.
So regarding the, the general plan, the consulting firm has completed it for the updated draft based on last fall's comments for the city. And they're kind of gonna go through the, the city, market city portion of it first. And then, but we should be getting, well, today's the 13th, so obviously it's not happening this week. But next week, we should be getting the county draft, the staff were reviewing it all, and then you guys have an opportunity to review it, and then we'll be going in hearings in February.
I have a question. It was Peterson and Mountain Green that was gonna be looked out by the WFRC. So that kind of pertains.
Are you looking at the land use grant for the small area plans for Mountain Green and Peterson?
So that'll be after the general plan, so there's.
Separate hearings and everything?
Yeah, and kind of a separate, more detailed planning process. This is the general plan, it's for the entire county, little higher level. What the opportunity we have with those grants is to get a little more economic analysis, a lot more detail in the plan. So we're hoping that the general plan gets approved, and then those area plans will then take another layer, level up, and, and get into more specifics on those two smaller area plans.
So any.
Those would come through the same process of being detailed.
But the maps for Mountain Green would be in the February-ish phase?
The general.
In the general?
We'll have the future language maps, and maybe there's, with the small area plan, maybe there's an amendment for the future language maps. Maybe the future language maps don't change. And it's just, you know, more side guidelines, or maybe there's a dissolved district or something like that.
So what do you think realistically for the general plan, then, March-ish?
Hopefully.
That wasn't promising.
Well, I mean.
April?
It's out of his control.
Depends on what.
It's out of his control.
Because I, every time I, you know.
No, I know, I just.
I thought we'd be doing it right now.
Yeah.
And we're not, so I can't make any promises. We do have the drafts coming, I feel good that they will give it to us this month, and we'll redo it. And then we should have a planning commission hearing in February and the latest commission hearing in March, it's, you know, approved.
So do we change that? So you said a draft is coming. We look over it, we have a hearing, then we make changes based on hearing, maybe.
We can make recommendations.
If it's still way off, then you guys can make recommendations or changes, or maybe we can say table it, make these changes, come back for another planning commission hearing? You're not here.
That wasn't really helpful for you guys. No, sorry.
Sometime this year.
Maybe.
Or next.
Yeah, I really didn't.
This year.
It's a process.
Not next.
And we should start hearings in February.
When you say hearings, are we having more than one?
At least one planning commission and at least one county.
Yep. Okay. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, anything else?
We were asking you, because they.
What's that?
We're asking you guys for a better answer than what Lance does in there.
You just gave us the answer, our, our most updated answers.
Unfortunately, I think that's the best, that's our current plan.
Okay.
All right, thanks again.
Yep. What else?
We've had not a lot of luck with the planner one and planner two openings. I'm gonna start working on a request for proposals for mining assistance, so we can bring in an outside consultant to help with some of the larger projects and just develop or do, to move us forward a little bit.
Like zero applicants?
I'm sorry.
Zero applicants?
We've had several applicants and lots of, lots of good people seem to be, well, not lots, a few good people are applying. And we did do a couple of interviews. I did, I think there's some good candidates. It's just there's so few people that it's, it's hard to, it's like. I'll, I'll say it this way, in years past, we would have had six or eight people qualified that had a planning degree, you know, that had these criteria to select from. We have some people that have that, but not a great deal.
They're just playing because it's an open job.
So, no, there's certainly those elements, and then, and we have just a wide range of people that are applying. So it's still an ongoing process and application, we're still.
Okay, so RFP coming for that? Private company, or like would we do it with Weaver County or something like that?
It'd be private company. I'll, I'll just say. Anyway.
No, don't worry about it.
Other government entities need to be doing their government, not.
Yes, not outsourced.
There's some times, but we shouldn't be putting out RFPs for work. That's not how it should.
I'll keep my lawsuit. Wouldn't surprise me though.
As a Weaver County resident, that's not what I'm paying them to do.
Yes.
And sometimes it's helpful, so we'll see.
Okay, anything else? No?
No, 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 she's, what, what else?
Uh, seat.
Oh.
Is it mine? Yeah.
At least he has a.
I was just talking about that.
Your what?
My seat.
Your seat?
It's up.
Oh.
You're gonna reapply, right? I don't know.
So we need to know if you'd like to apply.
Says you gotta, is it February or March?
Is it a two or three year?
Four.
Four. I feel like I've been here forever.
You took over your dad's, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
What attitude?
This isn't, this is just, this is part of my dad's, right?
No.
This was my own.
You were reappointed in 2018.
Wow, that went quite fast.
Is it first of March that you change or is it February or November?
It applies to February 28th.
So the first of March.
So we should advertise in February?
No.
No? We can advertise and then.
So that I can either.
Or you can just keep your seat right there. She's staying.
So if you can let us know by the end of March, that would be great.
I hope.
Well, do I have to just decide? Like, can't I say, why don't you see who applies? No?
No, you need to decide if you wanna be on the plane or not, then apply. What's your name, I can't, I mean, if you don't want to.
Sounds like you do have some talking to do after.
What are we doing here? No one applies for this job.
That's why you're here.
I'll let you know. Okay.
Who's up next, Chair?
Uh, that would be Chris and you.
Uh, that would be Chris and you.
I know they're.
Is this, is this my second here?
I have no idea.
Thought you knew all the things, Bailey.
No, I don't know a lot of things.
I think this is starting my.
Third.
I think this starts my third year.
I think it's your third.
So.
The only second.
This is like my seventh year.
He was, he was reappointed in March of twenty twenty.
Yeah, so in March, we'll start my third year, my third term.
Yep.
Yeah, you're up.
Yeah, cause this is number seven for me.
No, this makes, what?
What happened?
What happened?
Yeah.
It's around.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of people come and go, hasn't there? Different ones. I think when I first started, the only ones, it was Debbie and Steve, everybody else is.
This has been pretty stable for a while.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, did you get all, all of our inputs? Dustin had, just that, those four or five things.
I have one more thought I just wanted to talk about briefly is, uh, it would be helpful, um, cause in these casual meetings, it doesn't matter, the format of the meeting doesn't matter too much.
Okay.
But if we get into a controversial topic.
Which we, which we do.
It's really nice when you go to court on something to say, that's how we've always done it. So it is nice to have staff, applicant, public hearing.
Okay.
Or, and, and I think that's, I really think it should be applicant presenting their application, staff, public hearing. And, and the more consistent we are on that, it's not a big deal, cause, you know, no one's doing that, but if we get, coming up is some big applications, uh, we wanna be consistent on it so that.
Do you wanna do, do you wanna do SAP or do you wanna do ASP?
ASP.
Applicant.
ASP.
You wanna do ASP?
Because, and, and the reason we do, the reason that's preferred, it may, it always falls apart, I think I talked to you guys, it was passed about this and that, but, um.
But then they're the reason it fell apart, not us.
Yes, they're presenting their case.
Yeah.
Not staff.
You're not defending them.
Procedurally, that's just a nightmare for us.
And it's confusing to the public, cause I get up and I present, I say, they're going, okay, well, staff's on their back and their back, it's a perception thing too.
Maybe on the agenda, you could break it under each one and say applicant presentation, staff presentation. So that keep, remind us.
Let's mix it up.
More work for Bailey, but.
We'll make twenty twenty-two an interesting year.
Job security, Bailey.
Yeah, job security.
I think right now, my job's pretty secure until he finds somebody else.
But that way, we don't forget.
Well, that's me, I forget from.
Yeah.
I forget, but sometimes we don't have to vote for things, like going in the public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and like you say, it's, it doesn't matter on this one tonight.
Well, I feel like you're anticipating a lawsuit, that's kinda how I took it.
Well, we have a large application that's coming in and we have a couple things. I will say, you know, I've been, there's a couple of commercial developments that are working in Mountain Green that are coming in, um.
And how high people are in that?
And, and there's some other developments that are, you know, right on the cusp of submitting an application that we need to be prepared for and be.
What's the majority of planning commissions do, ASP?
No, most of them probably, I would say everyone that works has been staff, applicant.
That's how it's always been since I've been there, but, um, I just see the, the.
SAP.
Well.
SAP. The thing is, is do it like this for a couple of meetings, there's nothing saying that we can't go back if we feel that we need to and then just stay consistent, that's what he's after.
Well, that's true, I mean, if we, if we try for a little bit.
We have this, we've been SAP.
I, I consistency is the number one thing.
Yeah. But there's nothing wrong with making a change to reach a spot.
Except for tonight.
I'd be more than happy to have said, well, I didn't get that same treatment that this person got, or this application got, I, we have, what is that? For two.
Yeah, and you always get that.
I feel like the applicant might confuse us.
Yes, that's my concern.
And then you're just clarifying all their confusion.
And that's their application. I mean, it's my preference because they, I, I mean, I, we have this discussion a lot, uh, with applicants, it's a little like, here's my information, it's like, what are you submitting? What's, what is this application type? Well, it's for that subdivision. Well, what about it? What are you, that needs to be clear and it needs to be them telling us what they're doing so that we are meant not interpreting and making our own assumptions.
Well, but there, there too, I mean, you're, what you're telling us is, a lot of times is in this, anyways.
Absolutely.
Right, so we should, we would have read it and so we understand.
It's just true, but the public has. Presents, then you come up for, to clarification for us or whatever on that application.
All I really just.
Any questions?
Staff recommendation.
Or, but the time you're up there would be clarification to us.
Yeah, and then clarification on any questions.
With us, helping us if there's something that we don't understand or.
I think we should, I think it's worth a try, but.
Yeah.
I mean.
Could be fun.
Yeah, have the applicant first, the applicant will have your staff report, so they ought to be able to follow, follow it.
But they've been working with them before too, so.
But like, how would have, how would tonight have gone? I don't really have anything for you. Do you have the application before you go? Okay? And then staff? Any comments?
But the thing is, Gary, tonight, he didn't have to.
That's, the majority of the applicants don't.
Right, but if you're putting them on the spot, first thing, they come up and present their application, they got no choice.
So they can explain what they're doing.
Yeah, I'm with you.
You know, right tonight, Lance already explained everything, they didn't have to, it was done.
Sounds good, mixed up.
So are you, so do you give them a second opportunity after, um?
Public comment.
Public comment to answer the questions, cause usually we've done the public comment first so the applicant can answer those.
For some of the very ones.
A lot of times though, we do pu, we do the applicant, then do public comment and then let them come back and answer the questions.
Answer questions and staff too.
You know. And, and everyone's a different, depending on what it is.
And if there's some big things coming up, I'm assuming that there's gonna be a lot of public comment, so that would be.
And you don't wanna take the first volley.
Well, that's absolutely true, but.
As, is it?
Fair enough.
Presenting their own case.
Yeah, I think so.
ASP it is, so you're ASP.
Or they can, or they can hire someone, yep.
ASP.
Represent them.
Well, that's the.
The applicant has to close.
All right, good, if they wanna bring their attorney into it, fine.
Yeah.
But it's up to them.
App, yeah.
To present their case.
ASP.
Yeah.
Let the applicant close, like, okay. They can open it and close.
Um, we have had complaints in the past that we let the applicant close or rebut and the applicant. There's some question that the applicant was telling the whole truth, so they tell you what you want to hear and then you approve it, well, no one rebutted what the applicant said. So there, it wouldn't be hurt to add staff, have a, this short, okay, clarify whatever they.
ASP. Has, ASP.
Well, when?
ASP.
When? After, after the public comment and after the applicant rebuts and have clarifying questions?
Public comment, I would say you ended at public comment. And then if you would like to allow the applicant to respond to some of the public comments and provide more information, that would be fine, but also allow staff to, is there anything that we should like, that you'd like to clarify staff?
But I think that's, it's like the continuity thing, we either have to do that every time or we don't do it at all.
That's exactly what I'm saying, whatever you decide to do, let's just be consistent.
The, the problem, you got those, like tonight, I mean, if you'd had one or two people come up, you wouldn't have had to have it, so there's some times where you need the applicant to come back up and answer some of the questions.
But then we would always close with staff.
Staff.
Yeah.
Tonight, you would've said, the applicant would've presented, Dale, Dale says, this is why I'm requesting this code amendment. I'd say it's consistent, I mean, these are our safety parameters or whatever, public hearing, applicant, do you wanna respond to anything in the public hearing? Nope, didn't hear anything, staff, do you wanna add anything? No, it's fine, I mean, ninety-nine percent of the time, it'll be no problem.
What's about that one, um, of Ben Trapper's? The one, the slide place?
Yeah, we kinda.
That one would be, that one would be a different, a completely different story.
The, the only difference would be, we, yeah, we didn't lead with the applicant last, with that one, but we did have that back and forth.
Fine, that's good. We can try it with the next.
ASP.
The key smaller ones coming forward if there's any.
Yeah, but then what order? Applicant?
Staff.
Staff.
And then public.
Applicant, staff, public hearing?
We're here.
Applicant and then staff, yep. ASP.
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 Could that please be stamped on all of our packets?
Yes.
ASP. Noted. All right, anything else?
That's gonna be in the packet, right, cause we're gonna forget, okay?
Good way to start your next term.
I don't see so.
Buildings opening to five, what we'll do for the planning commission meetings is the meet, the building will be locked at five, but we'll open the doors just after six, which you can get in early.
I apologize, they weren't open at six today.
Well, six is.
Are they going to Friday now?
Yeah, it's hard.
What's that?
Are they going to Fridays?
Mm-hmm.
Five days.
And so, but we, we need to make sure the building's closed at five o'clock.
Eight to five?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in effect now then?
Yep.
Yeah, it's been, it's been since the third.
This is the second week.
With January.
Yep.
Nothing else? Okay, so you already got Dustin's input, Debbie's input, so.
Yep.
Take a motion to approve the, uh?
Some move.
Yes.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Some moved.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Any input?
Asta.
Boy, we stretched out that last fifteen minutes.
We could've had a record.